I will now call the April 18, 2016 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might watch the video at a later time on the way. Next, we have the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
There are seconds.
Second.
The roll call, please.
Councilman Levise.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have oath of office administered to re-elected mayor and councilmen. And we're going to do the council first, and I'll bring up the rear last. So that would be District 1, District 2, and District 3. So Councilman Carter, Councilman Culpepper, and Councilman Levise.
You raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Dale Carter.
Aye, Dale Carter.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of Councilman, District 1.
For the office of Councilman, District 1.
And that I support the constitutions of the United States and State of Missouri.
I support the constitutions of the United States and the State of Missouri.
The provisions of the City of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
The provisions of the City of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
And state statutes.
And state statutes.
And the ordinances of the City of Blue Springs.
And the ordinances of the City of Blue Springs.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the confidences and information which come into my possession.
And respect the confidences.
And information.
And information.
Which come into my possession.
Which come into my possession.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I didn't go small enough. Thank you.
Okay.
There you go. Hi, sweetie. Hi. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Chris Levise.
Aye, Chris Levise.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of Councilman, District 2.
For the office of Councilman, District 2.
And that I support the constitutions of the United States and the State of Missouri.
And that I support the constitution of the United States and the State of Missouri.
And the provisions of the City of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
Provisions of the City of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
And state statutes.
And state statutes.
And the ordinances of the City of Blue Springs.
And the ordinances of the City of Blue Springs.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the confidences and information which come into my possession.
And respect the confidences and information which come into my possession.
Congratulations. Yay, daddy. This didn't seem to flow naturally. Raise your hand and repeat after me, please. I, Susan Culpepper.
I, Susan Culpepper.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law for the office of Councilman, District 3.
Prescribed by law for the office of Councilman, District 3.
And that I support the constitutions of the United States.
And that I support the constitutions of the United States.
And the State of Missouri.
And the State of Missouri.
The provisions of the City of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
The provisions of the City of Blue Springs Home Rule Charter.
And state statutes.
And state statutes.
And the ordinances of the City of Blue Springs.
And the ordinances of the City of Blue Springs.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
I shall faithfully conduct myself in office.
And respect the confidences and information which come into my possession.
And respect the confidences and information which come into my possession.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to all our newly-elected city council members. You can go ahead and applaud them again. For those that don't know, Councilman Levise and Councilman Carter are elected to their third consecutive three-year term. And Councilman Culpepper is elected to her second consecutive two-year term. Now, I will take the oath of office for my...
She gets another three years.
You said two-year term.
Oh. We're still deciding whether she's going to get that. No, I'm sorry. Three-year term. But anyway, as I take mine, I have kind of a tradition where then Judge Vernon Scoville has given me my oath of office, and now it's my city prosecutor will do that. And the First Lady holds a Bible that was my mother's that I will hold my hand on when I take my oath, so we will prepare to that. So, and our daughter Carla is here from California, so she's going to assist her mom if you want to start getting her up, and head this way. Okay, so, Kim, are we okay like this?
You guys look great.
And Mr. Mayor, today I'm serving as Senior Circuit Court Judge Vernon Scoville, not your city prosecutor.
Okay.
Please raise your right hand, sir.
It is raised.
And repeat after me. I, Carson Ross.
I, Carson Ross.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualifications.
The qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office.
For the office.
Of Mayor of Blue Springs.
Of Mayor of Blue Springs.
And that I support the constitution.
That I support the constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the State of Missouri.
And the State of Missouri.
The provisions of the City of Blue Springs.
Provisions of the City of Blue Springs.
Home Rule Charter.
Home Rule Charter.
And state statutes.
And state statutes.
And the ordinances of.
And the ordinances of.
The City of Blue Springs.
The City of Blue Springs.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
In office.
In office.
And respect.
And respect.
The confidences.
The confidences.
And information.
And information.
Which come into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
And I think you need to sign this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is that blue?
That's blue.
I carry mine.
Well, then, you can have your blue.
Is there another color in there?
Nope.
It's only blue.
As in?
Blue Springs.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Let's go, come on. Good job. Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we will move to the election of the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any nominations for the Mayor Pro Tem position? From anyone?
Nominate Councilman Levise.
Okay.
Correction. No, that's right, isn't it?
Yes.
That is right.
Levise. Thank you. Okay, so Councilman Levise has been nominated for the position of Mayor Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations, or anybody want to make a motion that the nomination ceased?
I make a motion, nomination ceased.
And he'd be elected by acclamation.
So moved.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
And this is your second time around since I've been mayor, being Mayor Pro Tem. All right, congratulations. And I've learned now to delegate.
You perfected it, huh?
Yes, I perfected it, so you'll be busy. Next, we have a presentation of the Business Resources Network.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. That's going to be a hard act to follow, but I'll do my best.
You'll do fine.
I'm Jaclyn Reed. I work with Mid-Continent Library. I'm at the South Branch, Chris's branch. And tonight, I want to thank you for allowing us to update you on our Business Resource Network. Thanks. Let's see, I want to give you a little bit of a history of the Business Network. In 2013, we started the How to Grow a Business in Blue Springs booklet, and it was a multi-agency task force that was created. The first booklet was printed in July of 2014, and the task force did a lot of presentations in that fall. Listed here are the original members of the task force. And throughout the 2014 year, they met more frequently, and they also decided to create some objectives and goals for 2015, which is always a good idea, plan ahead. All right, so I'm going to give you a little bit of a summary of the achievements that we had in 2015. So we created this booklet and found out that a lot of people thought the booklet had good information in it, but they wanted something that was a little bit more interactive, and a live presentation is what they recommended in order to get some information that they could find more useful. So we decided to host what ended up being business expos. We had four of them in 2015. They started out with, a portion of it was a presentation of the actual booklet, but then we added some resource partners to the expo. You can see some of them sitting here with the attendees in order to add some more robust resources to the actual content that was in the booklet. So we expanded the task force to include new partners that you can see here, and that enables us to have some face-to-face support. So at the business expos, these people from the partner organizations were there to answer questions that our attendees brought with them. We had over 50 new businesses attend the business expos, and two SBA loans were produced as a result of people attending the business expos and meeting with our network partners. So they were, turned out to be a good one-stop shop for people to hear a little bit about the content, and then also, it was a very non-threatening and non-intimidating environment for people to be able to ask questions. So you may wonder who attended the expos. We had people sign in when they came, and we also asked them why they were coming, what type of information they were looking for. So four new businesses opened actually after attending one of our expos, and you can see the breakdown there of the percentages of the types of information that people were looking for when they came to our business expos. This spring, the city created a new business services division. You're probably familiar with these ladies. They integrated the revenue collections division and the community development department in order to streamline the city's business permitting process and to enhance transparency and responsiveness during the developmental review process. The Home-Based Business Guide was created from feedback from the original booklet and presentations in expo from people who found that they needed some more specific information for businesses that were created out of their homes. So we came up with that companion publication to the original booklet. We also decided, based on the feedback that we had gathered, to expand the guide that we originally started with, and incorporated some more partner organizations and some better resources for the business community. And then to get more specific, we found that it was more helpful to have specific guides based on the types of businesses that people are creating. So Downtown Alive, the Main Center Redevelopment Corporation, and the network created a resource guide for people who are interested in beginning a business or growing their business into the historic downtown area. And also, we created a resource guide. It's a bi-monthly newsletter, and it has all sorts of training opportunities for people who are interested in business training from all the partner organizations in our network. And you can find that online or in any of the locations of our partner offices, and it's just a one-stop shop of free or reduced-priced business training opportunities. So 2015 was the first year that Blue Springs participated in Global Entrepreneurship Week. You can see some of the events that we had. It's a week in November. It's just a week to celebrate entrepreneurship. There's 140 countries that celebrate that, and it was a good opportunity for us to offer some networking opportunities and allow business owners to connect with some like-minded individuals. Our efforts to work with the business community did not go unnoticed. As many of you know, we won the Missouri Municipal League's 2015 Innovation Award for our project. And we also have national recognition by transforming local government as a success case study. I'd like now to turn over the presentation to Kim Nakahodo, and she's going to talk about our 2016 projects.
Good evening, everyone. We are very excited to talk to you guys about some of our upcoming projects in 2016. It's often said that you can't know where you're going unless you know where you've been, and with that in mind, we are set to create a business snapshot, and it's going to be a two-fold program. So within the snapshot, we are going to kind of ask some big questions on what is our current business community and what is our market analysis and capacity here in Blue Springs. We often ask ourselves, what is our business community? What does that look like? We have a network. We have bits and pieces of the puzzle within our own organization, but what we don't have is a good holistic look at what the business community looks like. We kind of operate off of little individual pieces of the puzzle. So what this snapshot will do is it will answer some of our larger questions about ourselves. Number of businesses in Blue Springs. Home-based, storefront, building, service, mobile, what do those percentages look like? What types of businesses are here in Blue Springs? Professional, service, retail, restaurant? What are those percentages? We really don't know. Number of employees. Are most of our businesses self-employed? Are some of them, do they employ other? What does that percentage look like? What's the average number of years businesses are in Blue Springs? Are they below five years, over five years? What does that look like? What else can we learn? Another thing that we're, the other part of it is what is our market and, what is our market analysis and capacity look like? Who are we? What does our tapestry look like? What is our mosaic profile? What does the metro look like? What does their tapestry look like? What does their mosaic look like? When I use the words "tapestry" and "mosaic," what those are, those are industry terms. Those are marketing industry terms that businesses use when they look at and evaluate a community. What they are is it's basic market segments based off of lifestyle data. So every time that you're out and about and use your smartphone and you're looking for stuff, well, people capture that and aggregate that and build these, what you see right here, are community profiles of yourselves. What you guys are looking at, this is a tapestry. And in fact, this is a specific tapestry with a zip code 64015. According to Esri, which is one of the big data aggregators out there, they classify 64015 in three major market segments. 21% is green acres, and you can kind of see the description there. 14% is what they consider parks and recreation, and 13% is what they consider home improvement. This is how the market sees us. We need to learn how the market sees Blue Springs so that we can understand our business potential, our barriers, and our opportunities. This is a screenshot of what is considered a mosaic. And a mosaic is a breakdown of markets and spending habits. As you can see, it's just another way to take market data and aggregate it into a picture of a community. Just as there are, think of it like credit bureaus. There are three major credit reports for a reason. They each aggregate a different picture of credit history. So just like that, tapestry and mosaics are pictures that outside businesses, as well as the business community, thinks about our city in. We need to learn how they see us so that we can better understand how better to serve them and to sell to them. So what is our current market analysis capacity? What's our business saturation level? Industrial, blend, bedroom? What is our current business market? Are we considered a healthy or an unhealthy market? What else can we learn about ourselves so that when we're talking to business, we're talking with the same language? So how are we going to create this snapshot? Well, as I mentioned before, each one of the Business Resource Network partners have a bit of the picture. Each one has a piece of the puzzle. So by coming together, we can maybe get a better picture of ourselves holistically. One of the things that we are doing is we're partnering with Mid-Continent Public Library, who has extensive subscription services to some of these data aggregators. In fact, we met with them last week, and it's pretty interesting what they have at their fingertips. Demographics Now is easily one of the market's larger databases, and through our friends at the library, we're able to tap into that information. E-Marketer is another one. Esri, which is the screenshot I showed you earlier, is another one. This is how businesses look at us, so we really kind of need to understand that and to look at it through their lenses. The goal. The snapshot is important for many reasons. As I mentioned before, we, the network, need to be using and sharing the same data when we talk to businesses, much like we did with the How to Open a Business in Blue Springs booklet. What we did when we created that booklet is we created one document that when we talk to businesses, we all talk the same way. No matter which agency you go to, we're all coming off the same information. That is vital when we're talking to businesses off of how they're viewing us. What is that data? What are they seeing before they even get here? That way, we can understand what they're coming off of, and we're talking the same talk. Think of it as singing off the same choir book. The information in this will help us, the network, create better programming off of statistical data and local market trends. Businesses can use the information that we gather to better their own business plans or even help create one. We can better serve our entrepreneurs by seeing how they see us, how they see us, as well as we can help sell Blue Springs by all talking about the same analytic data. What does our local and regional shares by industry look like? Where are we strong? Where are we weak? What are the opportunities? What are the barriers? Whew. Lot of data, huh? As you can see, we have some pretty big ideas for 2016, but what we also want to do is talk about still providing the same resources that we found really worked for this community in 2015. So I'd like to introduce, I would like to invite everybody to come to our next business expo. It's our fifth one, Saturday, April 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at Mid-Continent Public Library, South Branch. Most of the Business Resource Network will be there, and we hope to have a large crowd to kind of learn how you can grow and open your business in Blue Springs. Another thing that we kind of found, is based on talking with the businesses that came, is that there's a need for micro or super-small financial education classes. Those businesses that are just getting off the ground, that really need some better information on how to maybe separate their funding streams, how to make wise investments, what all do they need to do before they go get a business loan? So that's some of the things that we're going to be working on, as well as the, some of the content that we go over on the How to Grow and Open a Business in Blue Springs Expo. We're looking at videotaping that and making them small, individual, kind of online learning segment. That way, if they're not there yet, they don't have to sit through an entire presentation. They're really just able to play the little tiny segment that they're at. So in 2016, we really, in January, kind of stepped back and took a look at ourselves. We honestly kind of realized something remarkable had happened. What started off as a tiny little task force just to write one little booklet turned into a network that's really redefining a process. I'd like to, oh, one of the things that we, two of the things, kind of our mantra, how we've operated, is really, businesses, we want you here. We don't want you around here. We want you here in Blue Springs, and we're going to do everything we can to make that happen. Also, that by working together, we serve you better. The more that we can kind of get on the same page, reduce redundancies, makes us stronger. So this is the new network. This is your Business Resource Network. And I'd like, actually, for all the members of the Business Resource Network to please stand up. This is your Business Resource Network. Woohoo! Do you guys have any questions or comments for the Business Resource Network?
Are there any questions of the Council? Councilman Fowler?
Well, more of a comment, but congratulations to the Business Network on your success and for all the things you do. Thank you.
No one else? I think he speaks on behalf of all of us. Thank you so much. Keep up the good work. Keep it going. Next, we have a public hearing on a TIF and Economic Development Annual Update.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibit to enter into the record. Council information form from Christine Cates, Assistant City Administrator, with the following attachments. Notice of public hearing is advertised in the examiner on March 22nd, March 29th, April 5th, and April 12th, 2016, and TIF and Economic Development Incentive Update PowerPoint Presentation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Mrs. Cates?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This represents our third annual economic development and TIF update, as required by Missouri Revised Statutes 99.865. This update each year covers the fiscal year ending 9/30/2015, and this year, it's a little bit later in the year because as we've determined what our compliance requirements are for these updates, we have to post a public notice, public hearing notice for consecutive weeks in a row in order to meet this statute as it was originally written. So this year, it's a little bit later, but we'll get back on schedule next year, probably in January, once the TIF annual report is completed and submitted to the state. So a public hearing in this statute is required for every TIF every five years. And what we started doing three years ago was we're doing an update every year on every TIF and any other economic projects that we have in the city, just to provide you a yearly update. And it's a little bit easier for us to keep track of if we're doing an update every year than to figure out which TIF is due on which five-year increment, so that's what we've continued to do. The TIF annual report is available on the city's website and is distributed to all the taxing entities in the letter so that they know how to access it, so they can see the progress made on the TIFs that were approved and how they might be affecting their taxing entities over the, up to a 23-year period on the TIFs. The annual report is due to the Department of Revenue each year on November 15th, and we use that format, and we add some pictures to it to, so we can see some before and after pictures of the TIFs and see how they look before they started, and then see the progress as they develop over time. This slide has a sample of the economic incentive districts. There are three maps that look like this that can cover the entire city and show all of the different incentive areas within the city. These are all available on the city's website, and we update those each year along with the TIF annual report. There are also maps that go along with these that show what the different sales tax rates are in each different area of the city, too. So if you're in a district that has a CID or a TDD sales tax, you can view those online as well. We had a couple new projects in fiscal year 2015. One was mentioned previously and was celebrated with a ribbon-cutting ceremony on Saturday, which was target time. The city council took a couple of actions last year to get this project approved. Approved there was a resolution approving the funding agreement, and then an ordinance that adopted and approved the 353 Redevelopment Corporation for that project. The city continues to have six TIF districts within the city. This chart lays out the, each district name, the date it was approved, the incentive approved, the financing type either designated or being currently used for that TIF district, and the incentives that were approved. With there being six active TIF districts, there are 13 different project areas within these six districts. All of them have been activated, except for two in Woods Chapel that have not been activated. Once approved in a TIF plan, there are up to 10 years before those projects have to be activated. So even though the date approved for Woods Chapel was 2010, those other two project areas could take up until 2020 before they're activated. And each TIF district is limited to 23 years. Mentioned last year was the White Oak TIF district during this presentation. It was approved during the fiscal year 2015, actually in November of 2014, it was approved. There were several, four ordinances that are listed here, five ordinances actually, that were all approved and included to create the CID, authorize the use of eminent domain, and to activate the projects, as well as approving the plan and the TIF contract that goes along with it. And it is our understanding that construction on this is expected to happen sometime during this calendar year, 2016 calendar year. Some other changes to our TIF districts this year included the Adams Farm TIF. There were several resolutions and ordinances that were revised and approved in order to refund the bonds for that TIF district. This refinancing, we have the city's financial backing, which was a goal the city council established when the original 2009 and 2010 bonds were issued for this project, and that was done this past July. Also in July, and in fact, it was at the same council meeting, two ordinances were passed for the Fall Creek TIF to amend their, amend and change... to amend their, amend and change the financing from bonds. There were CID bonds issued on this project. And those were changed to a bank loan to finish out this TIF, which is expected to be completed within the next two to three years. Last year, when we had this presentation, there was a request to include some information about the South Area NID, the Neighborhood Improvement District in the South, to give you an update on how it's going for the public. This is one of the reports that we provide to the city council every six months, is funding progress on the special assessments, what's been paid and what's outstanding. So a recap of that, the NID, is in 2009, the city issued $18.7 million in limited obligation bonds to be repaid with special assessments over a 20-year period. The 2015 assessments were added to 584 parcels affecting 336 different unique owners. There are currently 565 active sewer-only accounts within the NID. Most of the NID parcels are serviced by Water District 13. So we do not provide the water service for that area. In comparison, in 2011, there were only 252 accounts. So in five years, the number of accounts, active accounts that we have in that area has doubled. To date, $935,000 has been written off related to projects that, or properties that have been transferred to the land bank. And of this amount, just this last year, $349,000 was paid to the sewer fund for the land bank for the sale of Lot 10 of Chapman Farms. So the assessments went unpaid on that property. That property was transferred to the land bank. The land bank received an offer on it. And then that money was distributed to the sewer fund to help pay down that amount that was written off. So the net between those two numbers now is about $600,000. This map is a map of the NID area and different colored parcels. The green parcels represent the two park areas that the city owns, undeveloped park area. At the time of this report, in September, there were seven parcels that were scheduled to be transferred to the land bank. Two of those parcels have now been transferred. They are, numbers five and six is a very small map. Numbers five and six on, in red on this map. There are five more that will be transferred within the next year. And they are the orange-colored parcels. And they will go to the land bank and be listed for sale. This map is also a map that's included every six months with the update report that we provide. To get into a little more detail about the land bank, we thought it might be a good idea to update you on this as well. It was established in 2013 by ordinance. The land bank is governed by a five-member board of Blue Springs citizens. It's currently holding 35 properties. Only seven of those are for sale. The remainder are side lots, remnants that cannot be built on or developed. You know, we're trying to work to get the adjoining property owners to buy them or some other disposition for them. And since its inception three years ago, the land bank has deeded seven properties to the city and sold three other properties, one of those being the Lot 10 in Chapman Farms. So that is all I have for this presentation. If I, if there are any questions?
Are there any questions to come, Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. If you could bring back the TIF district table that you had up there?
That one?
Okay. First of all, great presentation. I appreciate this. And that, this table here on TIFs, there, it is common, they're all TIFs. And I guess, they all look very healthy as far as TIFs go. And I think there's very little risk with any of these. These are good turnover here. One of the opportunities for me on this would be putting a column out there as the projected date of payoff. I know we said they're open for 23 years, but to me, the success of a TIF is how fast it pays off. If it pays off faster, the more healthier the TIF. So if we could see a column there, it'd help me out. Thank you.
I could. And one good example of that is Copperleaf Village. When that contract was adopted, it was limited to 18 years. So regardless of whether it's paid or not, that contract specifies the amount of time that that TIF will be in place. So I will add that for next year.
Alright, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Carter?
To that point, are any of them running ahead of schedule?
No.
But they're all, they are all healthy, correct?
Yeah.
They're, yeah, very low risk, I think, so.
Anyone else? This is a public hearing. We'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that is in support of this report? An opposition to? Seeing none. Close this public hearing. Now we'll move to introduction reading of Bill 4422.
Our introducer, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4422. An ordinance providing for submission of a proposal to discontinue application and collection of the local sales use tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer to the qualified voters of the city of Blue Springs for their consideration at a special election to be held concurrently with the primary election called and to be held in the city on August 2nd, 2016, proposing the form of ballot to be employed at said election and directing the city clerk to do all things called for by law in connection with the holding of said election.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. That language seems a bit odd. It's approving the discontinuance. Could we hear an explanation on that? Our city attorney will explain it to you.
Yes, thank you. That's a good question. The legislature often puts in a statute authorizing a tax what the ballot language needs to be. And this is the way the legislature has written it. And they've done that in a number of taxes in recent years to, rather than voting to continue a tax, they require the voters to vote no to keep the tax. And that's just the way that the legislature--
So vote of discontinuance, or--
That's right. A no means yes.
Approving the discontinuance.
That's right.
Okay. That just sounds backwards, so.
That's what we said, too.
Okay.
But in what, yeah, clarification? We're looking for a no vote on this.
Well, we're looking for a yes to put it on the ballot.
Yes to put it on the ballot, yeah. Yes to put it on the ballot, no once it gets on the ballot.
Alright, alright.
In August. Okay, any further discussion? Call in favor, I?
Aye.
Same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4422. An ordinance providing for submission of a proposal to discontinue application and collection of the local sales use tax on the titling of motor vehicles, trailers, boats, and outboard motors that were purchased from a source other than a licensed Missouri dealer to the qualified voters of the city of Blue Springs for their consideration at a special election to be held concurrently with the primary election called